Today is March 17, 2015 afternoon work session.
In here a little bit, but I just want to talk a little bit about, and this would be a sharing of all of us, a little kumaya if you will. I just wondered, I wanted to discuss our recent legislative visits. I thought that it was positive from the people that I visited with and the meetings that I attended. I certainly liked the assessment legislation in the House better than in the Senate. The charter school institute bill that's running through, we were able to provide some talking points from Dr. Roca.
The charter school institute bill, is that the one where?
Florida State has an institute which hopefully would save us upfront time in dealing with new applicants before they get to the application stage.
Is that the one that also said there should be a need for the school?
No.
That's a different. It's one of those structural oversight to help them with the financials and help them with fiscal and capital.
So, you know, there are a number of bills that we're looking at or that will be addressed and hopefully we'll have appropriation soon. And we were earlier going this year than we normally go because of some issues that I don't really understand, but usually we go up about the third week in March, but I thought it was a good time. I did talk to Representative Boyd and Senator Deere and others about our project at Alta Vista and maybe there'll be some state money for that that we'll be able to get this year, which will be really helpful. So, I sent, we sent out some information to them post haste and we'll see how that goes. It was the first time I had had the opportunity to work with our new lobbyist and I thought it was very positive. I really enjoyed working with them. On a lighter note, I got to go and see the press skits on Tuesday night.
Did you?
Yes. And so found that to be really a fun experience and very interesting, although I'm not an insider in Tallahassee, I do watch enough and read enough, but some of it made sense to me, but it was really funny. The governor was there, he stayed for almost the whole event and a lot of the legislators were there and so I got to spend some time with them. And so it was a, it was a very, very good experience. Very busy, very productive. State School Board Association went to some meetings for the organization and talked legislative about some things that we're watching and you all get messages on those as well. So, it's a good experience. Anybody else wants to add something?
I will. What the, what I was mainly focused on since was hiring of a new, a new executive director because since Wayne Blattman is retiring. So, I have eight resumes with their backup that I read yesterday trying to whittle it down to four. And I spent a lot of time planning the next for our June conference. We spent a lot of time deciding what we're going to do with our June conference to make it more relevant to all of our members. And then I've also went and I was lobbying on behalf of the organization that supports the assessment, the revisions to the state and local accountability system to enhance student learning. Excuse me. And the, we support, we being the Florida School Board Association, support the revision to the statutory school start date that which will allow us to start school 21 days prior to Labor Day, which will get us through with testing before this holiday break.
On that note, can I ask Lori a question? I understand it was amended to say the third Monday in August.
That's right. Yes.
Does that still give you the time or?
I think so. It's always a little close for us. We are not one of those districts that always are able to complete, but if it's, if it's a mid-year assessment like the semester exam, we always allow them to take that before. So, it's just the half-year courses, your semester long, that they have to wait until the January timeframe to get enough hours. But I think that would, there's just a, it's just not doable the way the law is now. So, that puts it more in line with what it was this year. We didn't complete it before the winter holiday this year. We do have some flexibility in when they give their assessments.
We also support the funding of the ongoing efforts to increase the education funding to a level that's sufficient to place per student funding in the nation's upper quartile. We support the school safety efforts to make our schools safer, of providing funding and flexibility needed for the operating and capital cost. We support their technology efforts to fund the technology infrastructure for the district to develop comprehensive technology plans so that we can do our assessments successfully on the computers. We oppose the school choice options, the efforts to create or obtain public or private school choice options that undermine the authority of local school boards and are not held to the same academic, operating, and fiscal accountability standards as a tuition or public school. And we also support the Florida retirement system, actuarial sound revisions to FRS that provide a choice of plan options, establish pathways for re-enrollments in the system, and restore cost of living adjustments. For that is FSBA's platform that I was taking forward.
Jane, when you spoke with Senator Representative Boyd and the HHSU Academy, what were, what's the next step for the state money for?
Well, we had to get like a white paper, we had to get some documentation to them, which we did within 24 hours.
Right.
And so we will follow up with them. I'd really like to see that presentation that Dr. Shirley did today. I think parts of that would be very helpful for people to understand. But everybody that I called on, Representative Bob Cortez, Diaz, Manny Diaz, Spanio, all these people were, uh huh, this is great, this may be great for the rest of the state. And a lot of them would like to, you know, perhaps come. I had already talked to Adam Putnam earlier about his coming to see what they're doing. You know, it's more informative in the summer when we're actually teaching and they certainly have more time. And I'd like to see perhaps our delegation and Representative Boyd would really like to do that and the rest of our delegation is very interested in seeing what we're doing too, so.
That's great. Do you know what kind of cost, what kind of dollar amount we're charging for?
Well, we're looking at, you know, we're looking at between four and a half and five million if we were fully implemented and all Title I schools at like year four. To be, to get started in year one, we're probably looking somewhere around $300,000. And that's the request that we have to get started.
Or school.
Year one in three or four schools.
No, it's, we're just looking at right now the tier one Title I, the schools that have the highest level of poverty elementary schools.
And all of those are in North County, right?
Yes.
And it's $300,000 in each individual school or all together for the top tier?
Or Sarasota County?
Right.
It's, there's about, it's adding three additional schools to include Alta Vista with just entering kindergarten groups. So, it's not the full blown, so that you do it over time. So, it's the $300,000 for that pilot project. It doesn't fund, that wouldn't fund every aspect of it, but it would fund enough that would really help the first year.
And there's a minimal funding would, and I say minimal, maybe $10,000 funding that would come from, from our career in technical involvement. But boy, that's a really important piece because not only does that open up mom or dad or mom and dads' opportunity for a new career, but it also opens up a lot of people that don't know what we do at, at our career in technical college to become students. And what we have found at the little satellite we have in Newtown is that those students that come to Newtown and work on their GED or have worked on another course are much more likely after that to go to the main campus and do some work. At first, it would just be too much to go outside of the community or whatever, but after some training and after some orientation and some involvement, and we'd get people up there that are just working out every week, five days a week, helping people with GEDs. But we're finding that they're much more willing to come to the main campus and I think this would be true as well. So, I think we're opening a door to a lot of people in our community that don't know anything about what we offer and don't think they have any resources, so they're in a dead end job. But I think that the childcare piece of that, that accreditation would be excellent for some of them, culinary arts. You know, we're in the service business here and when we talk about the people who have and the people who have not, you know, we're about 50/50 in our space of the have not and I think it's, it's opening up a whole new group and whole new generations of people to take advantage of new opportunities. And we've got to do that in order to break that cycle probably.
Anything else on that topic? You're up again, Jane.
Well, superintendent selection process, I was looking at my calendar and noting that we're almost in graduation time and a lot of our exciting things that we do between April and May, which are our biggest months really probably of the year. So, I was thinking, well, we're going to have to start thinking about what we're going to do, the pieces and parts of hiring a new superintendent. And we have a year probably at best if we think in terms of next fall. Do we, and the questions that I have are, do we hire a search firm? Do we, do we establish a timetable? What will it take about 46 months to, to interview and to go through the process? How does the sunshine, how do the sunshine laws apply to hiring? We've got, we've got another, another piece of this pie which is, you know, we've had people in the community that have said to me, well, we should do the referendum next year, we should do the referendum in 2016 instead of waiting till 2018 because of the issue of it costing us money and it being a special election. Well, I've always said it costs us a miniscule amount to do a special election at a special time when we're the only thing on the ballot. Costs us a lot more to do an election during 2016 and get the attention of people. But would we want to be in the process of hiring a new superintendent and doing a referendum at the same time?
I think it's all a matter of timing anyway because I, you know, and I'm getting way ahead, but if we were to, Lori's, you're going to be here physically till spring of '17?
March of 2017.
March of 2017.
That being said, she's here till the March, till March of '17 if you hire a, a sitting superintendent, which is generally the way it goes, and again, who knows? That person is more than likely not going to be available till, until the end of June of '17, which means you have, probably have, would have to look at an interim. So, I guess my opinion is, and I don't want to disagree with you Jane, but maybe we're getting way ahead of ourselves on timing, but I think that.
Well, I don't think we are because we have two summer seasons and we have an election, a major election in November of 2016 and we have the whole school calendar. I'm just saying, I think it behooves us to start looking at some pieces and parts of it.
Oh, I don't disagree with you there, but I'm talking about as a person. I mean, if you're going to say, well, we want to have a person to start July 1st of '17, then I think we're.
No, I have no, no preconceived ideas on it at all, but I mean, I, I know that there are other school districts in the state that are, are looking now and, and from what they have told me, those, those school board members, it's taken them about six months from start to finish to find a superintendent.
And I would say based on my personal experience, that's about right. But then most generally, except in Lori's case, well, in Willman's case too, but generally you're, if you're hiring from outside, usually they're going to be under contract and don't usually want to move until the end of that particular school year, which would be the '17 school year. That's just.
Maybe what we should do is just look, put out a timetable. It doesn't mean that we have to do it now, it means we can start in September, but just put out some type of a timeline when we wanted to start the process, you know, and then at that point, look and talk about, do we want to hire a national firm, do we want to do it ourselves, do we want to hire FSBA? I'm just, maybe, maybe that's all we need to do, but just don't.
Well, I think so.
We will then begin the process.
And you know, we, we, when we hired lobbyists, I was confused as to how we were hiring lobbyists and we, we hired lobbyists very much the way we normally put out an RFP for tires or something. And so I was confused. I don't want to be confused about this. This is our job to do, to find and hire a new superintendent. It's the most serious thing we've got to do between now and the time that Lori leaves. And if you would like to stay longer, I would be happy with that, Lori.
Not possible.
You know how I feel about you, so I mean, that's not, but I, it does weigh on my mind and I just think that we need to, to get on with something. For example, if we decide to choose a, a search firm, we've got to interview some search firms and discuss it and find some, I mean, that in itself takes some time. So, that's the only thing, the only reason I wanted to speak today was because I want it to be all, on all our minds so that we can start having some dialogue and we can formulate these plans because it's the timeline, it's the sunshine law, it's the search firm. Do we have internal candidates, do we have external candidates? All of these things.
Why don't, why don't we bring it back and discuss it in September?
Okay.
And with some specifics of what type of a search do we want to do? I mean, those, that'll be our discussion in September.
Yes. What do you think?
And then put together the timeline.
Doesn't really matter to me, I just think we're, we're getting, I think we're getting, well, that's fine then. I just think we're getting way ahead of the game.
It matters to me because I want to do the, I want to do a great job because we've got a great superintendent and, you know, it's a, she has, I've said this for what, three or four years, she has big shoes to fill. And that doesn't reflect on your feet, Lori, it's just big, potentially, not literally. But she, we do, we do have, we have quite a job.
And I don't disagree with that at all. It's kind of like, and I was trying to think of a, of an analogy, but it's kind, you know, if you're offering a job that isn't going to be there when the person that you want gets there, whatever I'm trying to say, it kind of, you know, why would you, you can't offer somebody more than likely that far out and have them accept, so I think that.
But the process.
You know, if you want to talk about it for the next year, then we talk about it.
I've got hired a superintendent.
Right, right.
There are a lot of things I don't know.
No, and I think that putting it ahead of time, I agree with you, you don't want to put it out there because we don't know what this dynamics exactly will be at that time also, but the process, I think is valuable to put it out there, discuss it, come down to, I mean, I agree with wanting to, if we do a search firm, what are we looking for and making sure that there's multiple processes within the process, so. But, you know, starting the conversation now, what does that look like as we walk through it and set that process even more detailed through it? So, I, I agree. So, you guys say September?
September, yeah. Right after September.
And the other thing that came up in there and that conversation had to do with the referendum and maybe that's something we ought to put on the agenda to discuss, the pluses and minuses, especially in view of that it would probably fall in at the same time, but I think it needs to be a separate agenda item so that it, we don't, they find that we'd started talking about it when we were talking about the superintendent. So, I think when we put that on the agenda, that we also put on the agenda for September, the issue of the timing of the referendum.
And then analyzing the costs as you're stating, in a presidential, it's more costly? Is that, but you're talking about campaigning purposes?
Well, if you take a campaign and you have to get attention from the public, it costs more than doing a special election.
Right.
You might need to do some television, for example, where we haven't done that in a special election, so we've gotten out there for, you know.
Well, I, I think we need to table that discussion so it's on the agenda bill.
Yep.
Okay, number seven.
I, I would like to hear from, from Mrs. White, a little bit about the Financial Advisory Committee's plans for the rest of the year in terms of what they're going to be looking at. I know there was some discussion about having more meetings.
Right, and I think their next meeting, they're going to focus on what additional agenda items they would like to have included in their discussion. You know, certainly part of the discussion had been the self-insurance and they've done that at their latest meeting and they will continue to be getting the monitoring of the financial areas of the district, which is their primary area of focus. But beyond that, there was going to be kind of a, a meeting to really discuss agenda items, so I think that's in the works. They do have their orientation schedule that's now been posted, so there will be opportunities for the membership to see different aspects of the district operations.
In the past, have the board or you given a direction of, here are some goals we'd like you to focus on or?
It's not really goals because they're not necessarily a goal-focused type of group, they're a review advisory type process.
I would say that the, the health insurance, the self-insurance thing was, was a good example.
Definitely. So, yes, there are items and there's some that are just their primary mission is the overview of the budget, it's the overview of, of the capital budget, overview of the quarter set sales, referendum dollars, we give them, you know, the review of how those dollars are being spent on proposed budgets. So, certainly that's always a part of the discussion. And then as issues, we've had times where we talk about investment policy, when we look at expanding or having a little more flexibility or in our investment policy, that was brought towards them. So, there are certainly times where financially related issues come before that group and that's primarily is with Mitzi and Al, but sometimes we bring in other staff if it's about benefits. They've had a lot of discussions when we were looking at modifications of our health benefits.
But they, don't they primarily review either things that we ask for or what we've done? I mean, they don't initiate anything, do they?
Not typically, but there was some interest on some of the members that they are looking at, perhaps wanting to discuss some items. So, that is, this is somewhat of, they have some control of their own agenda, it's, but we're there as staff to support that, but we don't really direct it. Now, I will tell you, in the past, we've done more of the directing because they've been very open and they haven't had an area that they wanted to discuss. So, I think there's a little bit different dynamic, which is fine and we're working through in terms of the members doing some of the agenda setting.
Could I suggest that perhaps we get a copy of their agenda and the minutes emailed to us?
Sure.
I mean, you don't, or do you do the, who does the minutes?
The finance does, they're posted online.
Yeah, we've got the minutes and the agenda is also, because it's a noticed, it is in the sunshine committee, it's noticed, so the agenda's always posted, minutes are posted of the, of the meetings.
I, and I have a question, I'm not sure if this would fall under them and we'll start with you and I know we've discussed in the past and especially with the topic of school safety being at the forefront of everyone's, everyone's paper, you know, with certain legislation going through versus SROs, I know we talked about in the past, did we have a final cost or what it would cost us to put a SRO in every elementary school and then would that be something we could have them review?
If you go back to the workshop where we had the lists.
Right, right.
And I don't think that plan was even showing an SRO in every school because the sheriff said that that was not a possibility.
Right.
So, since that wasn't a possibility, what we put was either the sharing of an SRO kind of concept or a non-law enforcement personnel. So, remember there were two options.
Right.
Basically, all the things on the list, we have put aside because there doesn't appear to be new money, not sufficient to really look at a modification beyond the status quo budget.
Well, it costs about $5 million, was my guess, based on having conversations with the sheriff and.
It is extremely expensive. The other option is not cheap either in terms of even private company.
Coming in, right.
And of course, we have legislation zooming through that would allow people to arm themselves on weapons.
That's why, I think that's why I brought it up because it's being discussed and you hear people in the community ask about the SRO versus this, so just, and I know we've discussed it, I know that budget wise, we're not seeing it, but I'm not sure from a cost standpoint if something like that would be something they would reveal, but that's.
Representative Stube's legislation says, doesn't say shell, it says, it's at the superintendent's discretion, I appreciate that.
I think huge provisions.
Well, that's it for me.
Can you hear Ms. Frank?
Or Frank.
I think you got a phone call.
Shall we pause or?
Wouldn't hurt. We're running with that schedule.
Well, she gave me a copy, she wouldn't give me a copy.
Oh, she wanted me to fill it in. You signed it.
She won't give me a copy.
Well, not until we all sign it because I think Frank's.
No, 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 no.
I'm going to make her go online. Lori had to.
I've been trying to find this stupid thing online.
This?
Oh, okay, yeah. And she sent me a construction story, maybe a phone call.
I'm going to show you.
Okay. Yeah, she did, she did. I'm not a real, I didn't do it. I went on the school calendar, forget about that, I went on the other calendar and it's been that many times, I found, and I couldn't find Sarasota High, I think Sarasota High was missing, Polytech wasn't on, wasn't it on there?
What, for graduations?
I can't get there from here, yeah.
Oh, well, the little arrow goes across, you know what I mean? Maybe we should stop the screen.
No, the whole calendar was right there, for the month of May and then the month of June.
Oh, 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 we'll, we'll figure it out.
When I started.
Okay, moving right along. Shirley, your vice chair, take over please.
I'm busy too.
Number eight.
Just say the May.
Well, I think, I think he wants to hear what Bridget has to say about the parent liaison calendar.
You don't take them personally unless his really is Bridget.
He stepped into another meeting.
Okay.
It's a singular meeting in a special room.
Okay.
So, let's go to number eight, the parent liaison.
Okay, wow, so I brought this up because Caroline and I were at the community engagement, I'm not exactly sure what the name of it specifically was, but last two weeks ago and it came up and actually it was perfect timing because, you know, tailing off of some of the conversation that happened today at the workshop with Alta Vista. I know, you know, and I use two words here because they may be two different things. So, Lori and I discussed, there is a position that still exists in its parent advocacy and, but the community seems to think that we no longer had this position, so I thought we would discuss it and maybe is it doing what we all could be doing or do we communicate it better or, I know you had mentioned there was another position that was no longer there or maybe had, had evolved, so I wanted to put it on here in response to what the community had brought up in our, in our engagement. So, I mean, it's all to me.
Well, she's, she's very busy.
Well, yeah.
And it's, you know, it's, I was explaining to Bridget, she doesn't represent large groups of parents or anything, she's, if a parent is having an issue where they feel uncomfortable about how do I, I don't know exactly what to do, where to go, this parent can actually sit with them at meetings to help them if they feel uncomfortable. For example, if there is a discipline issue, a suspension, and they don't know what, they can call and she can tell them, this is kind of how this works here, would you like me to be with you at the meeting and I can help you and coach you with the kind of questions you might want to ask? And so it's there, we many times, administrators will sometimes refer a parent where they feel that would be helpful. It's available on the website, it's a contracted position. It's been, she's been here for a while.
We've had, we had, in the past, we had two holy school liaisons. They worked primarily with ESE, parents with ESE kids.
Right, right. We do not.
We do, we did away.
We don't have those. We have, what's left is, part of it, there's been reduction in some of the federal dollars and other budget cuts, you're aware, but we, we continue to have a migrant recruiter who works directly with migrant families, identifying them and making sure they know what's.
They worked primarily with ESE parents with ESE kids.
Right, right. We do not.
We do, we did away.
We don't have those. We have, what's left is, part of it, there's been reduction in some of the federal dollars and other budget cuts that you're aware. But we, we continue to have a migrant recruiter who works directly with migrant families, identifying them and making sure they know what services are available.
Good.
So we have somebody dedicated to that. And then we have this general parent liaison who does work with ESE parents and does work with general ed. There's no specific category of parents. The we, the principals refer parents to her.
Who is this?
Troop is her last name.
Troop?
Sharon, Sharon Troop. And her, she has a direct number on the website that parents can call her. So there may, there may be a different way, but we could try to make sure that people are aware that that service is available. Let's see if there's, she worked, it was basically under academic intervention, so it's where the position was. If you, if you remember, and Caroline, you're probably the only one who's been here long enough to remember class. It was a program that was initiated by a grant that started that position, and we took it over years and years ago. So it was, it's been, we've been able to maintain that position even with the budget reductions.
Well, and I, and I, and I don't want to minimize, I'm sure, I don't want to say that Troop doesn't have a lot on her plate. So I just wanted to verify what we were, we're hearing from the community, bringing it back. And I think it sounds like a completely different position, and that the other one was eliminated due to budget cuts or grants.
Well, the other one was an ESE dedicated. It was working specifically with families of ESE students through the IEP process. So it was focusing on one group of students. And this person does both, does just any, any issue that a parent has.
Right. But the two we had were more than busy.
Right.
They couldn't handle it. So I mean, why are we doing it now?
Well, with ESE, you do have some private parent advocates that we, that are, that use.
The two Susan's?
I don't know if they're still there, but I don't, I don't know who the individuals are. But there are groups out there that provide ESE parent advocates.
And they're not for the district, okay, right.
They're not hired by the district.
Right. And then even Eagle Academy, if you use those parent liaisons or advocacy, advocacy that put, you know, opened up the lines of communication, those were all third-party, those were nothing through the district.
No, those were, the social worker position.
Well, yeah, well, yeah.
She, that was a, it was a contracted position. So it wasn't a regular employee, but it was hired through the school district. So those were employees at the school district.
Don't some of the schools have parent liaisons or somebody appointed to do this?
No, they really, there's really, the staffing is.
Not there.
There's just not there.
Even through some of the SACS or PTO, the PTAs, do they have anything? Do some of them have?
I, I'm, they have parent volunteers.
Right.
That provide, you know, that serve in different capacities, but I don't know of any that have hired an individual to do that kind of work.
It's not that I know. I get plenty of calls.
Does the rule still hold that a PTA or PTO cannot hire a staff person?
They, they can't, that would be, they can't, they can hire, theoretically, they could hire their own person as a separate entity. But what was happening is they were, during budget cuts, they were saying, oh, we'll fund this position, and we don't do that because that can get into problems. But they can sometimes, to give the schools more flexibility, they'll donate money for supplies. So then that money then can go into staffing. We try to, we're very cautious, although we've gotten more flexible during difficult times, we're very cautious with grant-funded positions because it's hard to navigate with a contract that would be, doesn't have a ability to, at the end of the grant, you're gone. So, so those kinds of positions, we've now tried to carefully manage, that they're not treated the same way as another employee, which would have rights for continuing to work. And we might not have a position available nor the funding because the grant ran out. So we try to, we're cautious with those types of funded positions so there can be a clear understanding that there's no assurance once, if, when the grant runs out, that you have the positions. Because that's why contracted employees, 0145, 0310, contracted employees, give you more flexibility, because there isn't that continuing contract obligation.
Okay. Wow, I appreciate that. Just, it was again, trying to get more information and stemming off that conversation, seeing what other things the community may step up to help out.
Enrollment counts. Um, the reason I put this on, just because I looked at.
Excuse me, that's my job. Next enrollment.
Okay, enrollment counts. Now you messed me up. When I was looking at the budget, I was looking at the enrollment counts for charter schools and the enrollment counts for traditional schools. And it seems to me that the charter schools are showing larger numbers, and they're over counting. And we're not. So we have about 11 or 19, I can't remember, over the, what we've, what we've fulfilled today, but the charter schools are like 500. So when they, if they don't reach their count, and then comes January, and we have to pay money back if we get the money for those students, that comes out of the district?
No, 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 no. In fact, the adjustment is made early on, even before we adjust. But certainly after the October FTE, there is an adjustment made based on their actual count. So no, you're not paying for students that aren't there. You're only provide, you are only paying the dollars of students that are counted in the October and February FTE count.
That goes for charter schools as well?
Absolutely.
What I'm seeing now is that if it stays as it is, they would cause us to, we have to pay back.
No, they're, no.
If it stayed as it was.
Yeah, even if we overpay them in July and August and September, based on a count where those students, then it's reduced after the October count to make up for the difference. And so they have to adjust their budget and their staffing, and generally, that, they have already done that because they see how many students that they have. So no, you're not, it is adjusted. Sometimes they put in, some of the charter schools, they overestimate, they overproject slightly because they'd rather be over than under.
That's where I think the precision was at.
Because we don't allow, and again, this may change with legislation of what you can and cannot do, but within reason, if they're a little bit over, we've always accommodated that. But if there's huge differences that we haven't budgeted for and didn't anticipate, the deal was, we don't fund them, those additional students. Now, we've never had to do that, but it gave a message to charters that, don't, don't hurt us in your lack of accuracy of projection. It doesn't hurt us if they go over and that they come in under, because we will only pay for that. That doesn't hurt us. It would hurt us if all of a sudden, they have 300 more students than they said they were going to have, because they may be coming from some of our schools. That means we're under, we didn't, we didn't project that or account for that in our other areas. So our planning is all messed up. So it's trying to hold everybody accountable to being accurate in their planning.
That's definitely what the discussion was.
Well, they'd end up with a problem if they overproject by having more teachers than they need, and then what are they going to?
But they typically know they've got a little cushion. And so I don't, they typically, unless they have something, we've had a few cases, and you're aware of those schools, that things, they came in way under for things that happened that they may or may not have anticipated. And, and so then they've got to manage a reduction of staffing with that. But for the most part, they do planning just like we do. They don't hire teachers until they feel confident that they've got obligations of people that will be coming, because they know that they're only going to get the money for the kids that are there.
Thank you.
Other?
I brought in something. When I was looking at the newspaper one day when I was in Sydney, and the headline was the parents give NATE Plan top marks, but teachers still want them expected. It's a test that they give the students. And then they post everything on a website, similar to what we do, but they, they're including more information in it too, which I thought it was kind of funny, here it is in another country, and they're having some of the same discussions that we are. But they were putting financial data, and then this year, they're going to be adding school attendance to it too. So it isn't just a snapshot like what we do with the FCAT. And they also, when they give their school grades, they give it on a student's progression, not on what third grade did this year for third grade, and then what third grade does next year. It's what the students in third grade did this year versus then how they went up to fourth grade. And so it was looking at that versus what the FCAT does, or, well, I would imagine, the new ones are going to do that too. But it looks at school, the student improvement. Thought it was funny.
I wonder how you do that when they transfer, when they leave school. Well, I guess if they're out of district, then they just are no longer accounted for.
I guess.
And that's, and that's where we get in trouble with our community, because our community says that we don't graduate, we lose all those students.
Oh, yeah. But if you don't understand the rate, yeah, I mean, the way faculty, I think, is a, two very differences between drop out and graduation.
Any other others? I have one other, and I only say this because I'm not sure who was aware of it, who wasn't. Last Thursday afternoon, I got a call from a county commissioner who was concerned about this particular meeting that we're having here. And so I'd asked that we, do we want to talk about what we're going to do here again? Are we going to, I was a little concerned that nobody had any backup material for their topics on this, these subjects today. So I don't know what we're supposed. I don't know what we're supposed to do. I mean, do we just, I'm, I'm really frustrated on what's going on. So I'm just asking you guys, what do you want to do? Do you want to keep doing it and getting?
I think we're just keep doing what we're.
Letters from the county commissioners every month, or what do we want to do?
That was really not from the county commissioners.
Well, it was from the county, it was, I got a call from a county commissioner.
Well, yeah, and I.
But as the director of Argus.
And that's the, that's the conflict there, really. But I, I think we get a GoPro camera, mounted on a construction hard hat, and away we go.
Well, I could wear, I could wear the hard hat with the camera on.
Well, how about as chair, that you, you send her back a letter saying you're glad that she was interested in it, but were surprised she wasn't here? Or any of my organizations?
I just don't, like I said, I'm just getting real frustrated. I'm not quite sure what, what we want to do. Because then I have to talk to the press, and everybody makes a big, not that I mind speaking to the press, but it just makes a big stink out of everything. And if we're going to go through this every month, then, you know, then maybe we got to talk about doing something else. But I'm just really frustrated over this.
Well, you know, those borough counties doesn't televise any of their, any of their workshops or meetings.
They, they don't televise, but they have it online, they have them all online. But they don't televise.
As soon as Zo gets this done.
It's easier though.
Hurry up and get this recording so that.
Although I have a concern of us talking about this in another. I mean, if we're going to be specifically talking about this item, whether or not we should be televising it, perhaps we ought to televise that discussion, rather than having it here in this meeting under other.
I agree.
If I'm asking if we want to talk about it, or we just want to keep doing what we're doing. I'm all for keeping doing what we're doing, because it's getting.
If I may say something, and I didn't have anything to do with that, but it, obviously you know where I stand on this issue. It, I think, what it stems from is we discussed it in a December workshop televised, and we all discussed the pros and cons to having a discussion in there versus in here. And that I believe it was decided upon if it was a policy issue or high public interest. I mean, I mean, I have, don't quote me, that we were going to do that in the chambers, and that agenda items would be positioned accordingly, depending on the restraints that we have from a staffing side or, or what. But, so that's where maybe the disconnect is. And I do agree with you, if we're going to talk about it, especially if it relates to being accessible to the public, it should be there so they can see, at least we're discussing it. Granted, we do put them online, the audio, which I, I like, but, you know, I think that's where the, maybe the contention or just.
Well, when I, when I put my two items, which seem to be more of concern to others than some, I did not suggest to Zo or to anyone else that we put it in the morning or the afternoon session.
Right.
I just put it on the agenda because I just thought we, because we're going to get busy folks, and we're going to have, you know, be hiring teachers and, and having graduation, things get pretty hectic around us. And, and then we have numbers for the legislature and so forth. So things get pretty hectic around here between now and, and middle of June. So I don't really care about that. But I, I like meeting over here. I, I think that, I, I wonder, you know, if because of the situation with Commissioner Robinson being on Argus and on the county commission, and Argus can't really look closely at the county commission, well, you know, so I don't know if that has some reason why they're so interested in us now, or they just always have been. So I've got no problem with staying just as we are, and I've got no problem with discussing this at our next workshop either.
Well, even if we did in the afternoon, what backup would there be?
Well, that, and that's a different thing, because are we doing it differently when you put it up? Because there are some where you just discuss, and sometimes we have.
The letter was very specific that there was no backup documentation provided.
Well, I didn't think we.
So I guess you need to provide some backup documentation if you're going to put an item on the afternoon workshop.
Well, I know, it's, it's discussion.
He says, he says what they want.
I mean, it's just a discussion. We have to have a way of just discussing.
Starting point, I agree, starting point.
Because we can't sit around at lunch and talk about stuff, which is what people don't seem to realize. We can't talk about anything unless it's in a public meeting. Well, I'm sorry, but in my personal opinion, not everything that the five of us talk about is.
Is talked about.
Education channel worthy.
The superintendent, without knowing what direction we're going to go, is, to Jane's point, our largest task as a board in that, if they didn't necessarily understand that it was just a preliminary conversation, this is anybody. I could see.
But I again say, we're having this discussion under other. I would rather that we put this discussion again.
Publicly.
On the morning workshop agenda.
Well, I disagree. I think we've done.